So we can get cranked up.
I should have handled that before the meeting.
Tell the mayor he's tardy. All right, welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting, Tuesday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, one thirty meeting. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Remove.
Move by Mr. Lawrence, a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions, anyone? All in favor? Okay, seven zero. Carrie?
From the consent agenda, we're removing five C resolutions supporting the development of Aqua Suites and adding five R resolutions submitting a grant to the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security by the Police Department Bomb Squad in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Need a motion to accept the agenda as.
As amended.
Okay, moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Presentation agenda, mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd be brief. Welcome everybody to our meeting, and that concludes my report.
All right, moving fastly. I don't see any departmental reports, so we're gonna move on to the council reports. George?
Had a good weekend. They had the Oyster Festival. Ken and I went down there. We was forced to eat eight sets of threes of oysters. Everyone, none of it was bad. And we were full, we enjoyed it. Nice crowd, beautiful weather. That was a good event. Glenn Matina Jr. did a good job putting it on. So it was good for the city of Biloxi. On the court report, Pete, you said you're gonna have one of them for me today?
Yeah, I had a little busy week last week, but.
Well, yes, you did.
I did, but David Leckich, I got with him. He's got that report ready, and we can, we can get it to you or sit down with you this week.
All right, appreciate that. And Pete was busy. His daughter had, she got married Saturday night, beautiful wedding. Everything was terrific. Felix was there, Nathan was there. I think that was it, but I'll tell you what, it was. Have we made any changes they suggested so far, or we have to sit down and discuss that?
We have.
You have? So we need to know what they are, because just, you know, whenever we get a chance, we have to have a meet, we need to do that.
Yeah, the most, okay, never mind.
All right, let's see here. On the overlay district, I know we still doing that, then people want to know if the city's trying to take their property. I tell them, no, I'm trying to get rid of that. The short terminal taking these blocks over is all like, it's just like the RM twenty and thirty, it creates a problem. It don't solve a problem. It creates more problems. Terminals inside the house or in their neighborhood. So I'm asking you before, mayor, it's time to pull that, just kill that thing completely. We're not gonna, we, we didn't kill the overlay district two or three times anyway, the council. It's just, it just don't work. So anyway, that's my suggestion to you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Due to the rain, I wasn't able to go out there and talk to the, to the property owner with regard to the.
We had, we had water sewer people on site with them yesterday that assessed the problem, and then the crews went out there to work today. They're cutting the guy's driveway to try and find the break in the pipe.
Right. Well, I was gonna ask, due to the weather.
My understanding, they're, they're happy with the response.
Are people out there today still regardless of the weather?
They went out after the rain this morning.
Okay, perfect.
They're supposed to be cutting the concrete driveway.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, have a ward five council meeting tomorrow night. That's Wednesday night at five thirty at the Snyder Center on Pass Road. The public's welcome to attend. The only other item, I know the flagpole with Memorial Day coming up down at Visitor Park down there. Working on that, hopefully. Okay. Getting positive head nods and bobs, so appreciate that. Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, just like to echo Councilman Lawrence's comments on, on the Oyster Festival. Great family entertainment. I know they're in a one-day mode after COVID. They're looking to maybe move it to two days, and it's certainly something that I think can attract visitors and, and our, our local residents alike, but it was really a great day. The other thing, just, just a note, youth baseball, A.J. Holloway Sportsplex games were canceled yesterday because of field conditions. Just got a notice that games were canceled today as well. They're hoping to get some games in, maybe, maybe Thursday. It doesn't look good. And there's a big tournament this weekend. Also, we're, we're kind of crossing our fingers if we don't get more rain, that it can dry out for that big tournament this weekend. So again, all the more reason to kind of try to enhance that, that park, so we don't lose the play and use of, of those, those fields. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Glavine. Mr. Barrett?
On Friday, we had our ribbon cutting for Eagle Point Park. I'd like to thank everyone who came out to that administration department. Councilman Lawrence and Tisdale and Glavine, and then I'd like to thank everyone who helped to make that happen. It was a team effort, the administration, our council, and then I'd like to recognize again Casey Urie, our state rep. He really worked hard to help with funding on that and turned out to be a really nice park, so thanks to everyone. And of course, Sherry Bell and Parks and Rec Department, so thanks to everybody. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I have a couple of things. Peter, great, great wedding. Elks Award showed up, chief showed up, showed out. Breakfast with the mayor. Mayor did a great job this morning with breakfast at the mayor at our mayor health center. And of course, I want to also let the people know about the Mississippi games this weekend, the pickleball courts, as well as especially Easter egg hunt on Sunday at the sports complex. That concludes my report. Oh, you got one more. Come on, George.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to, I forgot to mention, I wanted to thank the administration, Sherry Bell. They started the fence at the Survivor Park. Had all the poles put up yesterday, so that's, they're looking pretty good. That's gonna be nice. Appreciate that getting done, take care of the kids that way. Thank you for that.
Okay, and two more things. Thank you, Walt, for getting back with me with that email. And I also want to recognize, I see Gary Fredericks, Gulfport NAACP president on the front row. Thank you, Gary, for, for coming. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna move on to public agenda, citizen comments, total minutes of, total time of thirty, forty-five minutes, three minutes per person. Anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Okay, is there anyone on my right? Mr. Bennett, come on up. Please sign in.
Thank you all for having me. I'm running because I left Jackson about two hours and fifteen minutes ago, so if they give me a ticket, I deserve it. Reason I'm here is that I was informed only a month ago that the team had sold the Biloxi Shuckers, Biloxi Baseball LLC. I was given no advance notice. The team was for sale. I was only told that the sale was final. Thursday, Friday or so, looking at the agenda, item N on the consent agenda, has not given approval, but has to give approval. Major League Baseball. For that reason, I thought, well, it's. I spent ten years trying to get this team here. I booked Conference USA for three years, ten to fifteen million dollar economic impact per year. I paid my money for the sign. That's MGM Marquee also paid for the sign. I'm compliant with the sign. I'm doing my best to keep it in working order. But I'm demanding that the council maybe table this, to give me as an owner who worked very diligently to get this team here through, through Katrina and through the oil spill at the request of the city. I did what was asked. And for me, as one of the very few minority owners in the entire country, to now leave what I wanted and go along with Major League Baseball to start the Hank Aaron Sports Academy and do all the things that I wanted to do here, helping kids underserved and underprivileged, free camps, free clinics. We host GCAC championship tournaments, SWAP tournaments, ABCUs, all the things that I wanted to and did do here. My last request is that please give me some time as an owner to at least know what this sale is all about. Everybody else has had a chance to see it. Obviously, you all have. I have financial investments that need to be protected. Major League Baseball has a diversity initiative to help black men get into baseball, not just old men like me, but young men. How do we get there if I'm being kicked out of a team that I own? How would you feel if someone sold your house without you knowing? How would you feel if a real estate broker told you, if you want a hundred thousand, I sold it for eighty, you take it or leave it? This is America. I'm a man of justice here. This is not, this isn't right. How do you sell something that I own and you don't even tell me? Then you tell me via email, not a document, not introduce me to the owners. I don't get a decent chance to be a decent man.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, that closed citizen comments. We're gonna move on to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance submitting section five four two to adopt an updated version of the National Electrical Code.
Okay, that was first moved by Dr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I have nothing to add. This is typically what we do periodically every few years. I don't have any comments other than that. Thank you.
Jerry's not here. Paul, what changes are we making?
Anytime the National Electric Code changes, we have to follow. So we, they changed the National Electric Code. Our code has to, has to track with it. So this is just a routine event that we go through every year or so.
So you're just adjusting it to the National Code?
We're just.
What are we doing?
That's all we're doing.
Okay.
We're not inventing anything new.
Okay.
Every, every three years, the National Electric Code come out with a updated version of safety requirements with the, from a national standpoint, and what they do is they come up with these safety requirements that's usually adopted all over the United States, and it also gives us credibility when we adopt these rules and regulations. And as far as an insurance reason, we go ahead and get it so we can get the best rating when it comes down to new houses and new bills.
I have no problem.
Re-bills, yeah.
My problem is just make sure that's all we're doing.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, that's it.
All the time we get these things written on the bottom line, we didn't see. I have no problem adjusting to the National Code.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna call for a question. All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Resolutions.
Consent agenda?
Yeah, it's just consent all the way, okay. I need a motion on the consent agenda. Move by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
The one I was looking at was N, the strip with the stadium. What are you actually doing here? I just need to find out because to know, if they have to solve a problem, we don't need to create a problem. There's something else gonna come out of this, because no matter what you say, we leased the stadium. All that stuff sits on the ground, belongs to us right now. So we can't exclude ourselves from what's gonna happen. So if we need to have them settle this before they come back and vote on this, I don't have a problem with that. Bennett?
All right, as I appreciate, the way the original lease reads, if Major League Baseball agrees to the new owner, the city's consent is not even required. Okay, that's step one. Step two is overtime and Ken Young have had separate litigation, and they, they have settled those agreements, which he has now reopened, saying is not treated fairly. However, he's a three point five percent minority owner in Biloxi Baseball. Whatever issues he has at Biloxi Baseball, he will continue to preserve those. If he's got a pending lawsuit against Biloxi Baseball, he's free to make any of those claims and keep those claims going. But a minority owner can't stop the sale of, of a transfer of a team. So there's other things in the agreement that overtime has never been able to fulfill, such as the repair of the scoreboard. That's supposed to be split three ways. There are things in here where they're taking on, the new owners are taking over a lot of overtime's obligations. They're taking two-thirds of it. They're, they're gonna be paying overtime's responsibilities. As far as the sign is concerned, that is a totally separate LLC that has nothing to do with overtime. The city has a separate lease agreement with the Marquee Board. We wrote to Mr. Bennett today, when we got his email yesterday, that that lease remains in effect. That sign is not being sold or transferred or anything like that. That's still his sign. So this is a, we're consenting to a sale of the team, and that, those details are confidential between the buyer and the seller. We don't know what the purchase price was. We just know that they've, they've reached an agreement, and they're asking us to agree to put the new owner in the place of the old owner. And we feel he's gonna be a better owner. So that, that's where things stand from the city's perspective.
You changed the baseball, so Major League Baseball, we changing owners of the team in the concession stand, all that together?
Whatever rights Mr. Young had, the new owner will have them.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to open that section up for other council members to comment?
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on that section, that area, before Mr. Lawrence continue on?
Peter, I'm no legal expert, obviously, but basically, we have a, a new owner. All we're, all we're doing is acknowledging that.
That's correct. I mean, we.
It doesn't change our relationship from one owner to the next in this case.
We would have the right to refuse if the new owner was just a guy off the street that wanted to own a baseball team, and you know, we vetted generally the, the new owner and who he is. So, but it, it's like a lot of these assignments are accepting an assignment. It can't be, it can't be unreasonably withheld. We can't just say, we're not gonna take you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Ms. Glavine?
You wanna go?
Go ahead, Mr. Demming.
Just clear things up. Dr. Tisdale just used the term acknowledging, but then you said consenting. And so are we acknowledging the team, or are we consenting to the sale? And if we're consenting to the sale, earlier you said, under the agreement, that we don't need, they don't need our consent, and if so, then why are we consenting, if consenting? And then lastly, just so you can cover it all at one time, you use the term vetted. And so when you're vetting something, it would appear that you'd be vetting them with the intent to consent. So I, clear those terms up for me.
Well, we are, we are consenting to the assignment. Anybody has a right to, the, the original lease gave them a right to sell the team. We're not agreeing to the purchase price. We're not agreeing to the terms. We're agreeing to the transfer of ownership, essentially.
And this is required by the original agreement?
The original agreement says, if Major League Baseball approves of the owner, which they did before they even came to us, if Major League Baseball approves of the new owner, the city's consent is not required.
So this is unnecessary?
I think it's necessary because we want the new owner to sign something off to us, saying he will be responsible for all these things. I mean, there are some things that we want the new owner to acknowledge, which we are getting here.
Are they in this agreement?
Yes. This amendment, that's what that does.
Right, and so I read through it, and so those, those obligations aren't transferred just by way of their ownership of the team? Is the agreement not following along with the transfer of the team? When the team, it says in here, the team takes the obligations and rights of the seller, then shouldn't they adopt this regardless of this resolution?
They are adopting it, however, there've been several amendments on top of amendments, and it takes some, just avoid some confusion in the future to say, I mean, for example, the, there's provision that overtime is supposed to provide fifty thousand dollars of revenue to the city every year off that advertising board. That's never happened. So we had two choices. We could say we're gonna just continue to get nothing and hope overtime pays us, or sue overtime, which has no assets, or we could revise the agreement as far as that. Overtime has settled, it's is not, is not a, there's been some settlement with Ken Young and, and Tim Bennett.
Well, I don't know that we.
Yeah.
That matters to us, and I think we have standing in that, that action. So in this agreement, the, the terms that you're concerned with, the other side, by way of this resolution, has agreed to these terms, or we?
They've already signed off on everything, as has Mr. Young.
I have nothing further.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
Mr. Bennett, you've, you've heard our position, or our council's explanation of what our position is. Would you like to come up and just say, give you a couple of minutes to, you heard where we're, we're at. You want to respond to it?
Thank you, sir. I'm not at all adversarial with the city, and I'm thankful for the city even building the stadium. I want the new owner to be more successful than we ever were. There's three boards that you're talking about, so no one gets confused. There's the primary board that works. There's a secondary board that through negotiations, I was able to get donated to the project, thankful to Lamar Billboards. That was an older used billboard that we got for free. The board no longer works, so it's been covered, covered with a vinyl banner that the team is being paid for. So if you're looking for your money, you might want to go look at the sinus on that banner and ask for a third of that. The third billboard that I paid for out of my pocket is the MGM Marquee that sits out in front of the stadium. I have paid every month. I pay right now eight hundred dollars a month on property that I helped put this together. The city pays a dollar a year. I'm on demise property paying eight hundred dollars a month, where the city pays a dollar a year for its property. Property where Brevard got a new garage and a crosswalk. The city got a new stadium, a fifteen million dollar investment from a private group, fifteen million dollars from the state. I won't go any further. So when we talk about how the deal was structured and what's fair, I've only asked for what's fair, it's to be given time to at least look at the documents to know how I'm gonna get my three and a half percent out. You can't discuss the price, but you're discussing my ownership. How do I get my ownership out when you just said I've been in litigation? I didn't. In fact, there's still current litigation, there is, that has not been resolved. How do you expect that I'm gonna get any of my money out when I can't even get this litigation resolved? I'm, I'm being sold up the river. So I'm not asking you all to do anything for me, other than table it, and give me time to at least explore what's going on here with the team that I own and worked ten years at the request of the city to bring them a stadium that now sits on property that was dilapidated. An old house, a building on the corner, a security shed. We all remember. And it's not that I just walked off the street. You mentioned being vetted. What do you do in ten years when a man comes back and forth up and down the street? I think that's vetting. I think I deserve at least the time to it, to understand what I'm getting into, because it's being sold doesn't mean this is all over for me, doesn't mean it's all over for the city. So can I request fairness, at least? Time? How can time be unfair?
How much time would you request?
Thirty days.
Does that impact anything? I don't think so. Make a motion. We table it for thirty days.
Okay, you move it. Second by Mr. Demming. Any, any questions?
I have a quick question.
Any question? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Barrett.
If we table this for thirty days, this has, the baseball season's about to start. This has no effect. It won't hamper, won't hinder anything, anything like that. It won't, won't mess anything up during those thirty days.
I don't think so, no. I don't think he's gonna settle his dispute in thirty days, but.
I think this will give him time to enjoin the city or Biloxi Baseball or any of the other parties if, if a court finds that you have grounds. And I would recommend do that. I don't think that anybody is gonna go past the thirty days, so, while your legal team, it's.
In this particular item on the agenda, this has nothing to do with the sale of the team. This is only the sublease of the stadium, correct? And, and everything that's attached to that as far as responsibilities and, and things of that nature.
Right, it's just the assignment. I think we're still due the ticket fees, I guess now that you're mentioning that. I don't think that would affect that. It shouldn't, but.
Yes, my question is, not only will it, will it negatively affect the city for tabling this for thirty days as far as us recouping any money, that with tabling this, cause us not to be able to recoup any money from ticket sales or anything of that nature?
I, I can't guarantee that right now. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't think so, but.
Well, can we, can we possibly, just a question, table it's subject to call until you can answer that question, because if it does, and it's gonna take money away from the city, it might be better we bring this up in a week versus thirty days if it's gonna negatively impact us financially as far as the city goes.
We've got a meeting next, next Tuesday night.
I mean, we can let it go thirty days if there is no impact to the city, but if there is.
I'll amend my motion to word it, table it's subject to call up to thirty days.
Okay, and do we have a second? And you'll second it, okay. Move by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Demming. Any more questions? All in favor? Subject to call, okay?
Can I, can I say in closing, because I never got a chance to ever say this, even on opening day, thank you to the city of Biloxi for building that stadium, since I wasn't allowed to speak on opening day. Thank you for picking up the, we know A.J. Holloway died in office. Fofo, thank you for working with me through the years, and I really hope this to be successful. I do not want the new owner to think that I'm coming in here to cause trouble. But when I feel like I've been run over and backed over and run over again, I don't expect anybody to put up with that, and my daughter wouldn't want her dad to put up with that, nor would any of you, your children want you to put up with that when you're trying to feed your family, making an honest living. Thank you so much for giving me the extra time that we've gotten. Again, we were only informed last month the team was sold, and then that it was on the consent agenda means the city has a consent, and if we're having to go back and figure out, can we or can we not, means that the city's consent is vital to this moving forward. If it wasn't, then you all told me to kick rocks.
Thank you again, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lawrence, I know you have more. Go back on, Mr. Lawrence.
Now, the other one I have is removed, so, and the rest of them are just pretty much regular contracts and that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine? Mr. Barrett? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Anyone against anything on there? Nobody?
None.
None. Okay, we're gonna move on to the routine agenda. I don't see any. Okay, we're going to move on to the routine agenda. I don't see any, but...
Walt, Walt's speech.
Walt usually come up? And did you want to add Frank in? Okay. Okay, well, Walt, after Walt, get his routine. Oh, I need a motion for the routine agenda and also add Mr. Bordeaux in. The routine agenda? Oh, okay.
All right, Walt.
That's what you thought.
Update. How's that, Walt?
All right, good afternoon, council. The, uh, the bunnies, we talked about at the last council meeting. There's 1.699 billion. That's in the, uh, FEMA website. It's been there six days, so we should have it in our city accounts. Another six to eight days. So they, they move the money forward and, uh, it should be coming here shortly.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Bordeaux?
Thank you. Um, y'all have packets in front of y'all. And I'll kind of go through what all those items are in the packets, but if we want to go to the final numbers that we have, and I apologize for being tardy. We got a new deductible buyback option that was quite a bit better on my way over here, so I had to go back and get that fixed. Uh, we're looking at page 14. The increase, I was trying to get to 35% rate increase. From 75, we were able to get to 39% rate increase, um, excluding taxes, obviously. But it's still a very large increase. And in addition to that, as I told y'all, you know, back in October till today, uh, we also lost coverage. And I'll kind of go through some of the losses in coverage that we have. I'm recommending option two. That is, the main difference in option two and all the rest of them is, instead of having full limits on MGM Park, we would only have, um, $10 million in limits on MGM Park. And one reason why I say that is the exclusion that I explained to y'all last couple, uh, meetings I came before y'all. We were able to get that, the exclusion for outdoor property taken off and no additional charge, but they're only giving us a $250,000 limit for that, and it's only a sublimit. And so that's going to be for your fences, lighting, a lot of the expense at MGM Park that will get damaged in a storm. We're capped at 250,000. They, originally, they wanted to zero that out. And at the last meeting when I spoke to y'all, that was completely excluded. So we were able to get some coverage added, not a lot of coverage, and it's subject to a 10% deductible. And so it's, it's definitely nowhere near as good as, um, the program we had last year. And so, um, we're, we're looking at going from 2.577847 to 3.843692. That increase, the 39% with taxes and fees, comes out to about 41, I believe 41%. Um, I have it in my notes. 49.1, I apologize. 49.1% increase. One of the reasons why we're not seeing, uh, the increase that some of the other cities that you're hearing about is seeing is because Biloxi, y'all, the administration has consistently increased value throughout the years. The carriers, they want a 10% valuation increase on all structures, which would have been devastating for us. We were able to hold that to about 690,000, just due to the fact that we just increased voluntarily last year significantly. And they were, they were able to pull back on that. The following page, you will see every market that we went to and how they responded to this particular account. Since the last meeting, when we talked about going from the $75 million loss limit to the $50 million loss limit, a lot of the carriers have changed. And some of those carriers that were wanting massive increases, we were able to squeeze them down or kick them out of the program completely. And so this is, I believe, the best program we're going to have. We're just, this weekend, we're still going through, and we're still fighting on, um, everybody agreeing to the same adjuster. We're going through and have to make sure that everybody's, uh, sublimits are matching, matching up, their deductibles are matching up. I think that we're almost there, and we'll be there by binding date. But, um, this is the best program that we could possibly put together, uh, this year. I do anticipate the next 24 months being similar to what we're dealing with as far as a, a lack of, uh, lack, uh, lack of appetite and capacity to give us the, uh, terms and conditions we've had in the past. And we are, and we do now have a higher rate than what we had post Katrina.
Frank, I got a question. You mentioned we have a 35% increase?
It was pure rate, was a, uh, 39, 39% increase. But when you add the taxes and fees and everything into it, it's on your property, it's a 49.1% increase.
That's what I had, okay.
The, the 70, the 75% increase that we were looking at two weeks ago, that was pure rate. And we're, by going from $75 million loss limit to $50 million was able, allowed me to try to push some of these carriers down. Our, our goal was to get to a rate increase of 35%, and we didn't get there, largely because of wind buyback. Uh, earlier this morning, our wind deductible buyback, which is costing us, um, I think 200, yeah, 277. We were over a half a million on that buyback this morning. And so, uh, the buyback last year was a million dollar deductible, buying it down to a million. This year's a million five. But we are, we're able to keep the max deductible at 4 million, where a lot of entities are losing their max deductible. And so once we hit 4 million, the carriers pick up, if we had multi-events like Louisiana had a couple of years ago. And I think that's important to be able to keep that max deductible. So it's not good news, but this is, this is the best program we're going to have. The other information that you have is your, the, uh, the, uh, biannual loss, um, per line of coverage. There are employees' names in that. We normally ask y'all, after y'all review it, if y'all have any questions, obviously give me a call. We can sit down and talk about it. But if that can go back to the administration to be, um, disposed of, there are employee names in there, so we ask you not to share that with the public. And if we want to discuss that in greater detail as a group, uh, obviously let me know. We go into executive sessions, discuss that. But we're performing quite well still on our other lines of coverage that's self-insured, or largely self-insured. And so I, I expect, even though this was a difficult renewal, I don't expect to see the same difficulty in renewing our workers' comp and our, um, other liability coverages when those come up.
Okay, George?
Mississippi is a value state. Does that affect the commercial properties like it does personal property?
Mississippi, I, I didn't hear the person.
It's a value state, so whatever it's valued at, you have to pay that. Is commercial included in that, or that's strictly personal?
For your replacement costs?
Right.
So we, we do have a replacement cost policy, but we don't, we do not have, we've, every carrier has agreed to waive co-insurance. And so if we are undervalued on a building, uh, at the time of loss, we will not be penalized. So in a sense, you do have an agreed value policy. Our intention is, and, and the, the administration's intention, obviously with increasing valuations, has been to keep it as close to replacement cost value as possible.
There's a couple of things. When you run through what we went through the last couple of years, everything went up in high, 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 high. Now prices are lumbering and everything else is about, about down to where it was two, three years ago. Do we have this property overvalued?
So, and, and that was our argument when they wanted a 10% valuation. We were able to show them that our market is actually decreasing in cost of construction, although our, our employment, the, the labor cost is still high as it has been. The actual availability to material and the cost of material is actually decreasing in our region. Other regions of the country aren't seeing that, but we are keeping track of that, and we send that every time we send a submission in of where our actual valuations are. And so that's why you're only seeing a $700,000 increase in values. When we, you know, we're, we're over $150 million in values at 10%. You know, we're looking at $15 million, which would obviously ultimately increase our deductible. Our goal in keeping that valuation down, we want to cover our buildings for what they're valued at, but we also want to make sure that deductible doesn't continue to creep up and creep up. That could be more onerous for the...
Do we have a $40 million, uh, insurance policy that you can break up into different buildings?
Yes, sir. So it's a $50 million loss limit, but what we can do is we can take the, and we've done that in the past. We can take your entire statement of values, break them out by ward, and I can provide the administration what the cost is per building. We normally do that for the museums, um, but we can do that for every asset y'all, y'all own.
I'm just, uh, we, we need to get together, the insurance committee, sit down, watch and see what we do with somebody's building. Maybe someone will be on there, or somebody to look at, you know?
And we scrubbed the, the statement of values pretty, pretty good in the last couple of years. We've taken off some buildings, uh, in the last couple of years. So, but more than happy to do whatever you'd like to do.
Well, the reason I asked about the value state, because if a building's like, say, the public safety worth $15 million. Okay, we're going to get to $15 million and take care of that, even if it might, only takes 10 million to do it, you still get to $15 million. I'm just using those numbers. I'm, that's why I'm asking, is commercial property considered part of like the...
You're going to get indemnified for the value of the loss. And so what they're going to do is they're going to give you, uh, as they do in, in, in any storm, is they're going to give you the, uh, actual cash value, agree, they're going to agree to that, is, say it's a total loss. And then whatever it is above and beyond that, all the way to your policy limits of $50 million, you would get indemnified, regardless of, um, you know...
What the cost is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
I have one question. Frank, this booklet that you handed out has got the names of employees in it, uh, workers' comp, liability insurance, auto liability, and so forth. What do you recommend we do with these?
I would, I would recommend that anybody that has one, give them back to you, and either I can have them shredded, or that if y'all, whoever you want to have them shredded.
I just wanted to reinforce that.
Yes, sir.
So if any of you want to hang on to those for a while and then give them back to me? Or get them back to us?
And if you have any questions, if, after, when y'all review those, if you have any questions for me, please let me know. We are performing well, but there are, and, and the administration does look at this, uh, department by department. Um, and so we kind of do a deeper dive with the administration. If anybody would like to look, I know the insurance committee looked at that last year. Uh, we could do that again this year if y'all would like to as well. But from a, uh, overall standpoint, there are no trends per se that we can point to and say, "If we fix this, you know, we're going to get our losses down." And I do want to reiterate, the MGM issue with the outdoor equipment, come time of claim, that's going to be a serious issue. But we will, we do have the documentation from the carriers and every carrier we went to that would not cover it. And so if it is damaged, we will hand that to y'all. Hopefully FEMA will see. We tried to cover it, and it was not available. And I, so I believe this is, if we had a storm, a significant storm, this is going to be a big combination of working with not only the insurance adjusters, but FEMA and showing the documentation that we bought what we could afford. And some of the coverages that we've had in the past, were not available, and hopefully it's going to be a battle we're all going to be in.
Right, one of the things Frank's hinting at, we're still in a dispute with our insurance company on MGM Park, Hurricane Zeta damages. So, um, they, the, the, we're, it's almost a million dollars in damages to MGM Park with no insurance payment, so we're still, we're still fighting with them.
And I believe there was, uh, some sort of offer here recently, Peter?
We understood there would, was to be.
Not discussing that now.
All right, Mr. Bordeaux, thank you. Thank you for...
Thank you all.
For the report. I need a motion to adjourn unless someone has something else. Dr. Tisdale?
Real quick, I need to see Mr. Lawrence and, and Mr. Glavine for about five minutes on insurance.
Okay. Motion adjourned?
I do.
Move by Mr. Lawrence, second. Second by Dr. Tisdale. All in favor? Seven oh.